Monday, July 6th, 2020. Members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. Can I have a roll call, please?
Megan, Beth and Carol.
Here.
Michelle Johnson.
Present.
Kate McKinney.
Here.
Ms. David Milton.
Present.
Deb Olson.
Here.
Marcia Scherz.
Here.
Paul Johnson.
Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I will.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we're going on to item number two is the presentations. And we're going to start out with item A, the referendum project update. We have Tom Twigg from SDS Architects. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tom Twigg with SDS Architects. So we've been meeting since May. I think we had our pickoff meeting and I've got a schedule in here that you can take a look at. And if you don't mind if I touch on that.
Please do.
The same content that we'll be looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else need a tap? So in that package, go through that packet. First item is the schedule. On the first page, it identifies the referendum date. The pickoff meeting is May. So we've been meeting with the staff and the administration since then. We may, June and July, develop some concepts based on your successful referendum, which is an addition to the elementary school addition and some other work at the middle school. So we're going to take this opportunity to kind of go through the plans and bring you up to date on where they are right now. So looking ahead on the schedule, we're going through design development, as we call it, and get the engineers involved and start laying out their mechanical, electrical plumbing systems for the projects. We've got kind of the base floor plan established like we see tonight. And then we get into construction documents in August through October. We have a series of meetings and we've had to rely on technology up until this point, doing everything virtually, but the district has been great to work with in that regard. Technology is great as long as everything works. So so far it has. Then we complete the documents basically at the end of October. And then there's a bid period, the lease for bidding in November, receive bids in December, and then start construction March, February, March of 2021. And with the size of the package, it's about 10,000 square foot addition at the elementary school and then the work at the middle school, we scheduled to take about 16 months. So starting in spring of '21, completing in June, July of 2022. So that's the overall schedule. And we're working with CSEs to develop those packages and distribute them for bidding at the end of the year. So the next page shows the site plan of the elementary school and kind of the blowup on the proposed addition. So as you know, the idea is to swing the bus drop off to the south side of the building. And the north side of the building will become the parents pickup and drop off and create a new secure entry. A lot of schools are looking at, you know, trying to create a more secure entry so they can monitor who's coming and going through the building. So that was one of the objectives here. So the green is the addition and also includes a little bit of remodeling in your existing music room. They convert that into the office space. So the office is moving to the south side of the building. And a lot of schools that were constructed at this period kind of had an internal office area which didn't provide a lot of, you know, observation and kind of a secure observation of people coming and going through the building. So that's being moved to the north side of the building. And then the old office is being converted to new. So the addition also includes four pre-k classrooms, about 1,100 square feet, each basically the same size as kindergarten classrooms that are at the elementary school. So a really nice sized classroom. As you can see in the image here, this is that more secure entrance. So people at certain times of the day enter through the vestibule and interior. So the doors would be lax, similar to what they have right here. So that entry into the building will be through the office. So you can have a look at that idea of who's coming and going through the building. So the existing building, again, right here, this is right now part of the music room. So there's a, the office is part is an addition and the rest of it is remodeling of the existing space. So it includes a nice sized conference room, principal's office, large enough to have some smaller cabinets with four to six people. Two toilet rooms, one dedicated for the health room. So that is a toilet off of that and then a private toilet room accessible for the office staff. One additional private office and an open office that has an entry in and then exit back out again. And there's an area kind of behind that front reception area for students that need to spend a little bit of time in the office for whatever reason. A lot of schools are looking for just a few study carols for students to spend a little time there. So the existing classroom is being converted into that service kitchen. The existing kitchen at the elementary, you know, your students prepare here the ice boom and brought over and then warmed up and served at the elementary. The size of this is basically twice as large as the one that's out there right now. So there's plenty of space to get what they need to accomplish within that space. So it includes a serving line so that we have a bit of a wider corridor here so the students would come through. You have a little gate here. Students would be served and then they go on into that cafeteria. Food delivery, you know, used to be right through this door here to this relatively small storage room. It's a little bit further distance, you know, they would pull up with a truck here and wheel the food on the carts another 50 feet basically and then into the kitchen. So part of that kitchen is the scullery. Students would return the dishes here. There would be a new washing line and new dishwasher and then some room for dry storage. So this is showing kind of a general layout of what we think you need there. And we're going to have some more specific meetings with the food service staff to develop a specific food service equipment. So the cafeteria, and again, this is the existing north wall of these classrooms here. So everything north of that could be addition. Includes the storage room for table and chair storage. And this cafeteria is 3,800 square feet, which is basically the size of half of the gym where you could, you know, be like approved now to half of the gym. So it's basically the same size as that. A nice sized cafeteria and we had some discussion with the staff about, you know, the events that go on here, music, presentations, that type of thing. You know, you could seat about 250 people in this space and the theater seating arrangement with the stage. So it's a, it's a nice sized cafeteria. Then to the north is the pre-k classrooms, which is about 1,100 square feet. They include a private toilet room for the student, similar to your kindergarten classes right now. There's a door connecting two classrooms here and two classrooms here so they can be a little bit of assistance by the other instructor if somebody has to step up, that type of thing. Storage for those classrooms is along the corridor wall, like some built-in cabinets, base cabinets, upper cabinets for the student, similar to your kindergarten classes right now. There's a door connecting two classrooms here and two classrooms here so they can be a little bit of assistance by the other instructor if somebody has to step up, that type of thing. Storage for those classrooms is along the corridor wall, like some built-in cabinets, base cabinets, upper cabinets for the student. And then student cubby in the corridor. We've got the number E students kind of figuring 20 per classroom for the pre-k. So there was some discussion, you know, that this could be developed. The pre-k playground will be down in this area of buildings. So on the next page, you can see there's kind of a bridge that moves into that space. So 3,800 square foot cafeteria. And we are somewhat limited in the height that we can create there because we don't want to create additional drifted snow load on existing buildings. What we're proposing is to put in a pitched roof. So your existing building shown here is about 13 feet, eight inches tall. So we can't really introduce a really high adjacent building because it introduces a lot of drifted snow load. We have to go back in, put in additional roof structure. It's kind of expensive. So we'd like to get a little bit more volume in that space. So what we're proposing is to put in a pitched roof. So we started the north wall, the new north wall, creating a little bit more height that way to get some clear storey windows and a little bit more natural light into that space and also get a little bit more volume. We're creating a drift of snow load on this side, but that's okay because it's a new structure we can design it for you. So that's the idea there. There's unusual detail we've seen in other schools of this period where the earth is burned up around the perimeter of the building. I think it was done as, you know, as a cost effective way to, you know, create a little insulation around the perimeter. We're not proposing to do that for the addition. We're bringing it down to the floor elevation. There's some other schools that have had some challenges with moisture into the building. So we're going to show it here, but basically there's a little burn around the perimeter of your school that comes up just below the window. So that's the elementary school. We've got some pictures in there of some other projects that we can give you some visuals of other cafeterias. This is a case and call facility that we built to do the commons cafeteria for. Notice that one of 13 foot ceiling, some nice natural light on the end walls to create a nice space within that cafeteria for a lot of different functions. Cafeteria is really a community center. You can use it for a lot of different things and communities could use it for a lot of different events, adventure.
Tom, the initial concept back when we started the referendum campaign had the new elementary office on the northeast side of the building. Can you speak to why as we've delved deeper into the concept process, that's in a different location?
Sorry. Yeah, David said originally it was located up here in the northeast corner of the building. We just thought that was a little remote, kind of out of the beaten path of, you know, people entering the building. So we looked at a concept that consolidated the new construction over here. It's more efficient, more cost effective. You group all your construction together rather than having a new addition here and a new addition in another location. So we thought this was a much more prominent spot. You know, there's a lot of activity that's going to occur in this wide corridor between the cafeteria serving line, you know, events on the weekend, the gymnasium, all things that's in session. So kind of that's a point of security where we think a lot of the activity will be in that school. Is that kind of something else?
Thank you.
We also created or stole some space here that is currently the fly edge office because we think it'd be nice to have some private public toilet room and a big intervention. So what we're creating there are two kind of unisex toilet rooms. This is basically private toilet room that can be used by anyone. They're good sized, at least some changing, diaper changing stations there. So the fly edge office potentially would move into the existing kitchen or the stable storage there is. In terms of the exterior, you know, you've got a red brick on the current building so that what we're proposing is a brick that would match your existing. You know, there's no additions here. Over here is the original building dating back to the 1970s, 80s. So we did attempt to get a brick that would match your existing building and use the exterior of cavity walls, you know, just a brick log of insulation and then concrete lacquer on the interior. And we talked a little bit with the staff about finishes. And what we've been discussing is terrazzo that we have out here, which is a very productive common areas, areas that get a lot of traffic. So we're proposing a nice, pretty cafeteria and to do corridors. And then the classrooms themselves, using some sort of resilient tile, use a luxury vinyl tile or a linoleum versus this DCT, another LVT as they call it, luxury vinyl tile is a little softer, but it's a little bit more of a game to it. So schools are really kind of going away from the carpeted classroom. So we're looking at kind of a higher length of. You can see here we've got a window into the corridor and then this row of windows would be like clear storey windows up and down to bring in a little bit of light into that space and give a little bit more volume to the cafeteria. I think there's a table layout that we had shown here that, you know, the seating floor 168 on those tables. That's the tables that fold up into the wall, individual tables that you can fold up and put into the storage room.
You mentioned the, you know, we're calling it cafeteria and the multi-use like for performances. Can you talk about the setup or the ideas in that space?
Yeah, with electronic presentations like we have here, we set that up basically on all four walls where you have the ability to put a, you know, laptop down or TV, like it's designed basically on all four walls. And it would have its own sound system specifically for the PA and for microphones and for any music that you want to be doing on it. It's kind of a flexible space with movable furniture and some setups that can figure out with theater that seating and going in a long direction or a short one.
So there's no built-in stage? It would be?
No. No, it would be a stage that we would wheel out and set up. So I think gives you a little bit more flexibility for different configurations. Any other questions, comments about the elementary?
About that, the serving area, what's kind of the idea for the way students would move through that?
They would come down the hallway, from the rest of the school this way. This door probably would be removed. So they enter and go this direction. We have a point of sale either at the beginning or at the end. We've talked about that a little bit. Whatever way you prefer to have it, the door, the students go into the line and they show their card. It's logged into their account. So the students would go along this line and then into the cafeteria.
And then the other, I guess that's the north side of the space is kind of coming right out of the office or next to the office wall?
Which area?
Uh, next to the new office wall and that office door exits into that space.
Correct. And the idea is to have a lot of, you know, glass here so they can kind of keep an eye on the activities in that area. Look at that 3D kind of shows that area there. So we created a little bit more space, you know, for the serving line to come through and still allow people to kind of pass by behind it. The windows into the office area here, this is the entrance out of that office area.
I guess.
Mr. Miller, would you go tap the screen, please?
Was there any discussion about kind of that same area, that serving area of maybe separating or was there any discussion of separating that into like a 4K hall? I can imagine the serving time gets kind of crazy and our 4Kers getting mixed up with the fourth grade class or any thoughts on that?
Uh, really certainly possible. You know, this is a fairly wide corridor here at eight feet. There's enough room for cubbies. But this is about twice as wide. You could potentially put a wall in there and separate it, you know, see it have a separate serving area. You know, a little bit of breadth of space is kind of a nice thing at certain times. I guess if that area does get kind of congested, you may want to consider, you know, a wall separating it from the 4K. But it's kind of a little commons area, not huge, but just an area for a little bit more space for different kinds of gathering activities. But I see what you're saying. And in these additions, our objective is to provide a definitive firewall separation between the existing building and the new. So whatever we do in addition to a building, you have to look at the rest of the building, bring it up the code if you don't provide fire separation. Because you have to go back in and add a fire protection sprinkler system to the building or provide a fire separation wall, which we do typically for that. The addition is really considered a separate building and then they're not required to go back in, put a sprinkler system underneath the building. So that's certainly possible as well. We have articulated here, you know, we could be fire doors here. We just have some specific hardware for an hour and a half fire rating. So this building is, you know, new enough that it has a fire protection system, drop But these are, you know, what we consider schematic design. We've got the plan pretty well laid out. There's still, you know, multiple meetings that you see on the schedule there with the staff to kind of break out some of the details of the specific spaces. This is your general layout here. Any other questions, comments about the elementary? We can come back to that. And as I said, we've created, some images there of the office area, the office area, whatever built-in gate worth, reception desk that usually has a width of about 30 inches, like a desk height. It also provides an ADA, you know, station for students and anyone with a disability to be served by whoever's behind here. And it has typically a transaction type house that's about 30 feet. So that's got space for two workstations in that kind of general office area. And the idea was to set up the health room so that, you know, there would be glass here, glass at the door so someone here could have some visibility into that health space and basically immediately then serve that in. So we'll go over to the middle school, around page four of that handout, that is a site plan and the blowup of that office area. And I think initially there was some concepts that looked at, you know, modifying the office that we have out on the south side of that building, out of part of that 2007, 2008 construction and getting a more secure entrance at that location. And then we looked at another option that basically took down that original gymnasium and then putting an 1,800 square foot office addition basically in that location. And a more secure entry. So this is a preliminary layout that we're trying to get some additional parking adjacent to that spot. Currently, the entrance off of the road to the north, and it actually is two-way traffic to 24 foot wide drive aisle. So it does allow traffic to go both directions. But then it's one-way if you come in here and then loops around and back out again. There's a little bit of parking right here. There's a couple pieces of utility equipment, a big transformer within that space. So the idea is that there's an existing playground right here is to relocate that around to the south and the east side of the site right here and open this up for additional parking. So you would drive in here, be one-way traffic, pass the new entrance, back around and out again. So there's enough space in here for 30 additional parking spaces. Parking's always premium, so we talked to the staff about kind of get as many spaces out here as possible. So the idea is that this would become the secure office entrance into the building so that people would enter through a secure vestibule. There would be times of the day where this door would be locked off so that you'd have to go through the office to get access back into the rest of the school. So this office is 1,800 square feet. Got that same type of reception counter so people coming into the building would be greeted by a couple of staff who's behind the desk. Also includes a health office that has a visual from here so that you can see in a monitor if someone's sitting at the desk needed to take over. Private lab to the health office, you know, private lab for the rest of the office staff. Workroom, slide, break room. And then a nice sized conference room at 343 square feet. And then a principal's office here. And then we also have these carols for some of those students that would spend a little time in the office. We've actually modified this a little bit because we, the staff was concerned about noise. We created a wall here and just created two stations within and a private room that would have glass so you could monitor what was going on inside. So there's some other things happening at the middle school, window replacement, boiler replacement, a lot of things from that list that I developed by season 10 as part of the referendum. But in terms of the construction here, this is, this kind of it is the office addition. But I will have to say, look, that one modification to this, the existing old gym is kind of right here. And there's an entrance currently that comes off the north side of the building. That looks like very nice entrance that we've created out of 2007, 2008 addition, which would just create a little bit more of a prominent entry into the north side of the building. So I had a concern about this situation where that existing entrance is right here and we're creating another entrance here. and we're creating another entrance here. Door number one or door number two. So we actually looked at an option, I haven't shown it to David yet, but trying to utilize that existing entrance that's already there. I think it's a nice prominent entry with blue lanterns. But to swing that office around, basically turning it 90 degrees so that people come through that existing entrance doesn't have to compete with the one that's a little bit further east. Basically have the same kind of function within the office. You enter the office here, there'd be a set of doors in the interior that you pull south for you a little bit deeper vestibule and so that you could force people into the office and then back out again. And you also pick up some additional parking spaces along that side. So it's kind of the same program areas within that office space, but I frankly think this is a pretty nice, you know, common entrance. You know, if you created another entrance a little bit further east, probably kind of mimic the same thing, you'd have two entrances to the side by side. Plus, this would be less expected. So I don't know, I guess I want to throw that out to David and the board here to see if, you know, this direction of the previous one we represented would be first.
It does seem like the, your second idea is a better use of the space that's there, whereas in the drawing that we see here, there's sort of that hallway that's...
Right.
Doesn't seem to be used for much.
Yeah, that was part of that 2007, and I think it was like create another entrance into that old gym, other corridor that extends out there that doesn't really serve like of anywhere.
My question is, the traffic flow. As parents come in to drop their students or pick up their students, they're going to come down, there's two-way traffic. Are they going to have to go through that entire parking lot to do the circle, or can they just drop off at the end and then shoot out?
Yeah, you could lose a couple spaces here and put another loop, you know, you could drop off.
Right. Otherwise, every single car is going to have to go to the total end.
Yeah, all the way through, yeah.
Okay. That was my thought, is that, you know, to get the parents in and out quicker so you don't have to go through the whole loop. Otherwise, we're going to end up with the traffic, you know, because parents are going to sit there and wait for their student to come out at the end of the day.
Right, right. So that would be another option, but there's some big shadows here from the old entrance gym, but basically you could loop around here, drop your student right here, or continue on. And middle school's always a tough, you know, parent drop off, and they've got the driver's license, so there's these lines of tires coming and going.
Will students still be able to be dropped off from the south end of the building on Oak Street and walk up? If parents want to drop off, we're there?
Yeah, I believe so.
The main entrance will move to the north end of the building.
But what I'm saying is that can students access from the south if they wanted to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You could drop off. Now, across the road to the east, there's this parking lot here that I think this is all your property and then this has got slated for some sort of bicycle courses. So the buses would still line up along here and drop off and then students enter the building either here. And then I think there's another walk right here. Initially, there was some discussion of going out and then creating another drive along this side, things ending out here, but the grid along that side really starts to drop off, you know, beyond where that existing playground is. So this is a pretty significant eight-foot elevation change down that hill. And it could be difficult and expensive to get another access road northward at north. So there were some parking spaces along here. So this 30-count, we just the new, I think there's some space here that kind of offset the five or six that you lost with that other position. As I said, the idea is to acknowledge the old gym and then there's open space out there that you can pull that playground that's currently to the north around that inside So any other comments, questions about the middle school? Does any other opinion about this original plan or the current standing reason that you like existing entrance? I'm curious about that.
I think it's better, my opinion is, it's better to have just the one entrance than to have two competing entrances, because I'm sure we'd hear about it.
It's a nice, prominent, you know, entrance. It's pretty visible. You know that that's where the entrance to the building is, right? Okay, well, if you want to add a recommendation or something, it's okay. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Brad from CESE 10.
Good evening. So for the update, it's going to be pretty brief here. It's, as you can see, a lot of the time has been spent on design, so for CESE's hours, we've really been looking at attending design meetings. Luke has been in the process of getting me up to speed so he can transition on to other projects now, so that's largely what we've been looking at. We've also been starting to build up some documents for when the projects begin, looking at contractors to consider to invite. As we look into the next month or so, things will definitely start to ramp up. We'll be having regular meetings with the district. And then, once we get into September, October, November, it's really going to be full speed to get through with the bidding process and get everything that's needed there. Any questions on the update? The next agenda item, would that be sampling or would that be HVAC?
Either way.
Either way, okay. So we did want to try and get some work completed this summer, and what we're looking at is some HVAC work. So the first would be is the middle school controls, getting those updated. They would be the similar design to what we have, or the same design as what we have at the elementary and high school already. So it's going to be a lot easier for easy control, functioning with your buildings and ground staff, being able to monitor those buildings from off-site. The, it's really looking at the main interface and then controllers for air handling units, heat recovery coils, cabinet units, heaters. And so really, that price came in at $111,640. Now, when we look at the high school HVAC, we'd be looking at boiler replacement, four water heaters, two pumps that serve the boilers, two pumps that serve the geothermal out back, and then the two energy recovery units where the fans are kind of in a peculiar spot to where they don't really function as good as they could. And so that price came in at $163,800. And just for reference, for all the budgetary numbers we had throughout, for those items, we're going to have a savings of over $50,000. Typically, we like to competitively bid everything out, and in the future, we would. But looking at this, Jamar, who provided the proposal, is your service provider already. They've done the HVAC work the last several years for the school. For us, truly, it's one of our most trusted contractors that we work with. And really, with the numbers they put down, I think they're very competitive. We told them that they would have to provide some low numbers that, you know, kind of account for what we've seen on past projects, or we would have to go open, reopen those bids. So with that being said, I think you have really fair numbers. We're going to have over $50,000 we could put back into contingency. So hopefully, down the road, that could be some wish list projects.
So Brad, your hope on that would be that the board would consider those proposals at their next meeting, at their July regular meeting?
Correct.
So that if approved, Jamar could start the...
Yep.
Purchase process of equipment and items?
Correct. They'd be looking at, hopefully, an early August start, and it might go into school slightly, but it really wouldn't affect school operations.
Okay. Excellent. Is there any questions? Okay.
So the second item would be, CESE presented the district with a sampling proposal. That would really be addressing any potential asbestos throughout the building. So we have to sample anything that's not wood glass, fiberglass, or metal, or that hasn't been previously tested prior. Otherwise, according to the state, it's assumed to contain asbestos. So what we look at doing is getting a majority of it done in August, but we would be on the conservative side to where we wouldn't take more samples than needed just in case some of the designs changed. So we take what we'll absolutely have to go. Then, once we get construction documents this fall, then we would come back, you know, perhaps on Thanksgiving break, winter break, somewhere in there, complete the remainder of the sampling. And then, with the potential of having wish list projects, which I always hope is going to be the case, there might be some additional sampling years to come. So the two Jamar proposals, they were lump sum numbers. For CESE, we have $18,068. That'd be a to not exceed amount. A lot of times, you know, I think the very low end of this would be about half that amount, but worst case, again, would be the $18,068. If for some reason more samples were required, we would pretty much just eat those costs. So it's just a one-time proposal so we don't have to keep coming back to the board asking for approval. And again, that would be the same as the July meeting. We can wait till then for approval.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, anyone? Okay, do I have consensus to rule these proposals to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Shannon, can you talk about the Baird document we had, please?
So I know that throughout the referendum process, we referenced approximately 4% as the target interest rate. We kind of anticipated all along that we'd come in lower than that, but we're happy to report that we locked in at a 2.14% interest rate for an approximate savings off of the original estimates of about 3.9 million. And you guys have received the document. It's out there. It very clearly shows those cost savings and the savings in the interest rate percentage.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then, next up is item B, achievement gap reduction. Mr. Hopkey?
Good evening. How's everyone? Good evening.
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks, good. So I'm coming to just give a wrap-up of the Achievement Gap Reduction Program, which is a program that's utilized at the elementary building. It's actually a grant received. And I just had the second slide in here just to kind of remind everyone what exactly the Achievement Gap Reduction Program is. I think many of us remember Sage or hearing something about Sage in the past. This replaced Sage back at the end of the 2018 school year. And it is truly focused on reducing that achievement gap with our students that come from disadvantaged homes as well as other cohorts. Okay? So typically, this presentation would be done in June, but this year was anything but typical. We ended up closing school or ceasing our in-person schooling right after the beginning of the second trimester. So we had quite a bit of schooling to achieve yet or to go through. So that really impacted what we could report, but still, talking with the DPI and State of Wisconsin, they still wanted to have a recap of how things finished this year. So that kind of impacts some of the information that we have here. All right? As we get into kindergarten, I know that one issue that we had was trying to get any information regarding the goal that they had set for both math and ELA. The goal that they had was based off from the fast bridge testing, which is done three times a year and launched in April. Obviously, we weren't able to conduct that, so getting good information for these goals was not attainable. Okay? So that is something that we have to take a look at as far as, you know, when we're gathering that information on a regular basis, how hard we try to get it. We move on to first grade. We were able to get some formative assessment data that kind of gave us an idea of where things were. When we looked at the reading, and we started off with a number of students that were in the some risk to high risk according to the fast bridge, and through some of their common formative assessments, they were able to determine that quite a few students were able to increase their fluency by 30 words per minute. That's what their goal was intended to do. So it was really trying to improve that fluency or their reading fluency in first grade. As far as math, what we're really looking at is getting students to complete addition and subtraction problems efficiently and effectively, and that's where we're getting most of our students, 58 out of 64, were able to get at least eight of the 10 problems correct that they were given. And this was more timed, so they had a certain timeframe that they had to complete these problems and they were able to do so. For second grade, we're making some good progress as far as where they were performing. And this was really focusing on answering questions for fictional texts. As we're getting with our formative assessments prior to closing, we had 25 out of our 72 with that proficient, which we still have ways to go. We had 36 out of the 72 who were working towards that. Yes, we still have some that are lagging behind, but knowing that we also have, had missed out on two and a half months of in-person instruction there too, so there was definitely more time to gain. Same with math. We were progressing fairly well there as well. Third grade, as we're talking about the progression, they have the two standards that they were referencing out of there. That was recounting the stories. That was on the fiction side, and then determining the main idea of a text, which was nonfiction. And with their scores, we were seeing some improvement there. We had 12 out of the 64 that were proficient, and then 43 were definitely progressing towards that proficiency. And then, that was for the nonfiction, and then with the fiction, 10 out of 64 were proficient and 48 were progressing towards that. Okay? And then for math, they had a module three assessment and determined that 36 out of 64 had met the goal that they were looking for. And I know the Achievement Gap Reduction Program is based, or it's focused on kindergarten through third grade, but I didn't want to leave fourth grade out, so I gave information based on the goals that they had set as well. They were focused on very similar standards as third grade, so we have a common focus there. And they weren't able to get the common formative assessments to get a number of where we're progressing. So we've got a little work to do as far as our formative assessments, tracking that information. Any questions at this point?
I do have, I do have one question for you.
Yes.
Based on this data, I realize that we didn't have, you know, we didn't have, you know, April and May and that part of June to go by this, but what is, you know, what is the data telling you as a building leader? Some of, you know, you've got a long way to go and there's a lot of kids...
Yeah.
...that are progressing but not there yet, and then you have those that are definitely not there. So what is your plan moving forward?
Absolutely.
Knowing that you have lost those times? And how are you going to engage the staff in being able... And how are you going to engage the staff in being able to make those assessments and 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 cover that?
Check. So a lot of this has already been taking place with the P L C process that we started this year, which we were really focusing on unpacking the standards and developing some of those common formative assessments. So we were we were in that progression stage as team members. And what we have already started to do is that alignment across the grade levels to make sure that all of our standards basically line up and that we have a focus in our instruction. And part of this too, and I know that we had talked previously as well, we've got our power standards currently. But with this next year, knowing that we missed two and a half months, making sure that teachers aren't trying to go backwards, but really prioritizing those power standards. And what is what is it that we're really focusing in on to make sure that we're hitting the instruction that those students really require? So we're making that progression and really kind of focusing our our energies in the instruction. So we're not wasting time trying to regain ground or getting off on something that's not necessarily necessary for instruction.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Hopkey?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Okay.
You mentioned how you're working on aligning standards, grade level to grade level. Can you talk to me a little bit about the baseline and how that data is collected? And how much of the assessment that I'm looking at here and that baseline number that I'm getting, are those standards that are brand new information to these, for example, first graders? Or is this information that they may have touched on the previous year?
A number of them is it's information that was maybe introduced at a previous grade level.
Okay.
But most of it is new and what they're going to be working for towards for the end of the school year.
Okay. So that baseline is kind of a fresh start for them so that we can see that growth over the course of the year.
Yeah, especially when you're you're taking a look at the STAR data, which is which was a different assessment that we started in second grade or first grade with math versus this coming year where we're going to have fast bridge across the board. So I I think the numbers are going to line up a little better and we'll have a better understanding across the continuum of it is.
Okay.
You have your baseline and you mentioned that these assessments are given, I believe, beginning, middle, and end of year.
Yes, ma'am.
So you can do the end of year. Did you have middle of the year data to show progress?
Yep. So I I do not have it up here right this instant. I know I did bring that along when I gave the the briefing in February.
We talked about it.
I know kindergarten, January, if we can kind of progress back here. So with kindergarten, what we had with the with the baseline back in in September was eight out of sixty-nine were at eighty percent accuracy. And when we hit January, it was twenty-eight out of sixty-nine. So we were making progress there. And then with the math, we had eight out of sixty-nine that's that were at eighty percent accuracy at the beginning of the year and then forty-three out of the sixty-nine by the mid-year. So we were showing some good progression there. When we get into first grade, again, we had forty-seven out of sixty-five were at the some to high risk. And out of those, they had thirty-seven that knew ten or or fewer. But when we hit to or when we got to January, we had seventeen out of forty-five had students had increased their scores by thirty words per minute. So we were showing showing some good growth there. Okay? And then with the math, baseline there again was five out of sixty-four. And by January, we had forty-two out of the sixty-four were able to get eight of those ten problems correct. So we're progressing pretty well. With second grade, the STAR score was at one ninety-six point five. When we hit January, the average standard score was two sixty-six point five, which was an increase of about seventy points average from the standard score. So that's saying that, yeah, we're progressing pretty well there. And then with the math, we started with eight percent of the students. And by January, we had thirty-six of the students performing in the developer secure range, which is indicating some good growth and proficiency. And then with third grade, started with thirty-one percent of our students at that projected mastery. And by January, we had forty-seven of the students or seventy-four percent. Forty-seven percent of the students were at the secure range by January. So that's good. Math, we started off with five percent of the students in that secure range. And then in January, we had twenty-seven percent. So we were moving in a good direction there. And then fourth grade, started off with a baseline of thirty-one percent of our students scored in the secure range. And then January, we had forty-five percent that were at the the secure range. And then math, baseline was twelve percent of our students performing at the sixty percentile. And by January, we had thirty-four percent.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any other questions, anyone? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Item C, review the 2018-20 staff school perception survey results. Dr. Azam?
Okay. So a lot of information in the document that's contained in board docs and just some general information to share. Again, an excellent rate of response, about a hundred and thirty employees participating. So that number is very close to what we had last year as well. And and that's excellent in a district that's got about a hundred and fifty employees in it. So good rate of response. We thank everybody for taking the time to share their insights because they are important. But you know, the as we look at trends, we continue to make positive progress forward in our district. And that's that's what we want. We want to continue that forward progress. At the same time, we know that we have some items that are ongoing, items that that we need to address. And a couple of examples of those would be communication and the framework for how we handle discipline really across the district. So those are some pieces that that feedback's important on and that we will work towards as we roll into this new school year. I can't I can't I can't provide you with great answers to individual questions because it's a diverse group of people that are survey takers. However, if you have some general questions, I'd be glad to feel them and try to provide you with information at this time.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just kind of a comment. Happy to see a lot of positive movement forward. The perceptions seem to be overall quite quite positive. So we're on a good track. Thank you for your leadership.
I'd like to see the I go down and look at what's the green boxes versus the red boxes. And I see a lot more green boxes and that's showing really wonderful progress.
Could you speak a little louder, Paul?
I'm sorry?
A little louder.
Okay. When I go through the survey, what I look at is the changes, the green boxes versus the red boxes. When I see the green boxes, that's a positive change on each one of the topics. So there's a lot of real positive changes that have happened here and from the previous surveys. So that's a sign of our leadership. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I I think it's always good to see a lot of green boxes and see what we have. And with a organization this big, you always have your ebbs and flows. With one of those things that you pointed out about community, those two categories that you said, doctor, are we or are you going to come up with a plan to address those? Or is there going to be like some strategy to work towards some of these things that the few boxes that we did see in red, in particular, those two categories?
So a couple of insights on that. Good question. You know, primarily the work in the schools, school improvement plans. You know, are focused on on those areas because those line up. Those items that were starred as red are items that also line up quite closely with our strategic priorities. The other piece of it is particularly when we look at discipline, you know, we're really working to get better at interpreting data and then using that data to take the right actions at the right time. And when we talk about the P L C process, we talk a lot about academic achievement. But behavioral data is also part of it. And within that, you know, our our work is to continue to move forward to have an understanding of of students that are struggling, when they're struggling, what the conditions are when that takes place, and then apply measures and be able to evaluate how, you know, how effective they are. And then go back through that, go through the process, repeat the process again, where we're continuing to try to drill down and really identify how we can best support those students. So in terms of individual standalone plans for these items, no. As part of the larger district and school improvement initiative within the organization, yes. You know, we continue to to work towards making that progress in those areas as we did in other areas that were surveyed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We are going to receive and place this on file. Thank you very much. The next item is item D, the class of 2020 graduation ceremony update. Mr. Scherz? Do you have anything to?
Do I have anything to update? You got you got the letter I sent out to parents of our plan at, as you can pack it. Outside of what's in there, there isn't a whole lot of change at this point to that. I mean, it certainly, as we're all aware, every day changes. So I think we all have to be aware of the fact that if our county decides that, you know, things are going in the wrong direction, then we're going to have to reevaluate what we do too. Because, you know, the bottom line is, and you can see from the structure of the plan, is to create safety and create the most calculated risk we can with the process, knowing that certainly, and believe it or not, I've heard it once or twice of how important graduation is and how nice it would be face to face. But the reality is, we have to do what we have to do as a district to to keep everyone safe. And again, that's how the plan was devised. And hopefully, if you have any questions on it, let me know. It's coming next week. So.
Thank you very much for all your work. I really appreciate it. I'm sure we all appreciate it. Is there any questions from anyone regarding the ceremony or the process that they've come up with to keep all the students and community members safe? Anyone? No? Okay.
Just a quick insight. And, you know, thank you, Mr. Scherz, to you and and your staff for working on this plan. And and I know it ranks right up there with trying to plan the D-Day invasion of Normandy in nineteen forty-four. A huge task.
Should look similar.
So.
Come on, though.
Thank you for for taking the opportunity to survey students and be mindful in your planning of that feedback and to work with the resources that we have in the county to plan a graduation that honors those wishes of students in a same way, you know, in a safe way. The other piece of it that just to reinforce is, if anybody feels that that's an unsafe situation for them, they don't have to come. It's not a requirement. And the event will be livestreamed as well. And those those seniors that are not present for a variety of reasons will be acknowledged as well. So there are options for people that we think cover all the different concerns and insights that people have had in this long planning process.
And that being said, I do want to, I do appreciate the support that the board and Dr. Azam has given on this process. Because you know what? It's it's like in life, it's really hard to make everyone happy. But if you're but if you're doing the right thing, it's always the best thing to do. So thanks again for your support as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks for all who were a part of that planning to help make this happen. So I appreciate it. Thanks for that.
Okay. We're going to move on to item E, the hiring update.
Well, we're we're in full swing as we enter July now and start to ramp up for the start of a school year. That's sure to be a challenge for everybody in a different environment than anybody's experienced in the past. I'm going to take the middle school principal position first. Excellent work to buy a variety of people to turn this position around, get it posted and and get things in a position where we're where we're ready to interview. So, you know, I think this is just a a really good reflection on something we talked about earlier this evening. And that is our district continues to make positive forward progress. Thirty-five applicants for this job. So that's that's just outstanding. And and, you know, what's even more encouraging is ten of those applicants had the three years or more of building level of leadership experience, administrative experience that that we knew was important. So tomorrow night, we'll interview four applicants. From that, we'll we hope to narrow it down to two candidates who will be interviewed on on Thursday night. And our intent, again, as we talked about last month, is to be able to bring you a hiring recommendation to act on at your July twentieth meeting. And thank you to Mrs. Jepson and and Mrs. Olson for being part of the interview team. So that's questions on the principal job.
Any questions, anyone?
Couple other positions that came before you earlier in 2020 that I want to share some insights and and get some direction on. So earlier in 2020, we talked about after at least three years, thinking that we were going to be in a position to bring a behavior support specialist onboard. And that to be a a district level position, not an administrative position, but a district level position to help address those those students with very high behavior needs across the spectrum, K through twelve. You have a job description. We we know that we talked about this back earlier this year. You have a job description to take a a look at. We have, boy, then the COVID came. And we just the financial picture moving forward in public education and the whole state of Wisconsin right now is murky. We know that the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, which is kind of the first link in the chain of any state revisions to the second year of the budget, won't even happen until next month. So we're very confident that we'll go into the new school year without a fully developed state level picture as to what that part of finances will look like. And, you know, a really great illustration of that is our July first, which is our preliminary estimate of general aid. You know, that that's come out the past week. And we know that we're cut over fifteen percent on that, whereby we were cut to a little less than five percent for the previous year. So that said, you know, it's it's the administrative recommendation that that we put hiring this position on hold for a year. And we do that not because it's not needed, because I think we all know that that is important. And we just talked about discipline in the school perception survey. But we've also talked about not not bringing a position forward if we don't think it's sustainable. And at this point, we just we have some concerns and and we would hope that we would have a much clearer picture when we roll into the hiring season for the 2021-22 school year. The elementary interventionist position, again, if you'll recall, that was a position where we, based on enrollment, projected for fourth grade for the coming year that we'd look to roll one of those four fourth grade positions and make it a elementary-wide interventionist position to support academic needs. And again, that's a position that we're we're going to recommend that we delay for a year. And we look at that because we know whatever school will look like in the fall, that we'll need to work to try to keep class sizes down. That we know wherever we're at in our county, in our area with COVID, that one of the keys to keeping people safe and healthy is to minimize interactions with larger groups. So again, we would look to keep keep that position as a teacher position and not. So again, we would look to keep, keep that position as a teacher position and not an interventionist position for next year. And, you know, hopefully, we're just in a lot different place, not only financially, but where we're at with how, how we're dealing with COVID, what remedies are available, and look to bring that position in for the fall of 2021.
Does anyone have any questions regarding this?
In terms of delaying it for a year, when it comes time that we may or may not be looking at, at this again, would that be a process where we would need to revote on these positions? Would it be looking at the district as a whole and its needs and adapting? Or would these be approved, but just at bay for a year?
Yeah, I, I think that it would be a, a safe presumption to say that these positions would come forward with any other staffing recommendations that we do early in the calendar year.
Okay.
So by then, we have at least a tentative idea of where we sit financially and what we have for personnel needs. So they, they would come forward. And, and, you know, what, what you've approved at this point is the positions. And you haven't approved anybody for hiring or anything like that. So does that give you enough information?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay. Do we have a consensus that we, to move forward, let the admin move forward with not filling these positions for the 2021 school year?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. All right. Okay, then we're going to go to item F, is the review of the first draft of behavior support specialist job description. That is something that we had asked for earlier on. And so in order to eventually get to that point and post this position, we need to look at a job description. So that is what the admin has provided for us. So, Dr. Eisen, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, you know, the district policy calls for job descriptions. And, and for those that have been seated on the board for a while, wow, you know that you have looked at a lot of them in the past 18 to 24 months here. So, you know, this comes forward in this format. It is a new position, so different in that respect, you know, again, as I said earlier, not an administrative position. It would be on par with a school psychologist or our specialists in the area of math or ELA. And, you know, really just another level of support that we hope to bring forward in the not-too-distant future to support the behavioral needs of students across the district.
Okay. Any questions, anyone, on the job description? Okay, I'm going to ask if we have a consensus to move this forward to our July meeting for the first reading.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
It, it's not a policy, so do we need a second reading on a job description at all? I mean, a policy, we would need to read one or two, but can we just approve this at the next meeting?
Yeah, you have a district policy that allows you to waive the second reading? So you certainly would have the purview to do that.
Question? Yes. So do we want to do this now? Or do we want to wait to see if this changes based on what changes?
I, I think you want to approve the position. You know, this, this has been a design that's more than three years in the making. So I think the description is pretty solid.
Okay.
And what the, what kind of qualifications we'd look for.
And we, and we know that the need is there. Yes. So, you know, I think, I think we'd be advantageous to move forward and approve this description so that we have something in place when and if that time comes, that we move forward on this. Okay. So, everybody good? Consensus? Okay. All right. All righty then. We are going to move on to item G, review the 2019-20 district health services annual report.
Let me take one. Per guidelines, the, the Board of Education is required to receive an annual report from the Health Services Office. It's a very long report with a lot of statistical information, so we're not going to go through it all. Hopefully, the board has had some time to read through it. And we're just asking for a read and put on file. It does not need approval.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions regarding any of that information that was given? Okay, then we will receive and place on file. Thank you, Mrs. Hamilton, for doing all that work.
Yes, absolutely.
So I know that was a lot of information and a lot of time and effort to put into that, to give us that information. So we, we thank you for that. All right, then. Item H is the review of the 2020-2021 academic standards.
So this is an annual requirement for school districts and school boards to, you know, to formally state, here are the standards, the academic standards, that'll be applied for the upcoming school year. And so in this, no change in the document from last year, and that'd be that for mathematics, it's the district standards that have been developed and adopted by the school board as, as it is for English and language arts. For science, the next generation science standards. And for social studies, the Wisconsin model academic standards for social studies. So this would be one that we'd look for you to, to adopt.
Okay.
At the regular meeting in July.
Okay, so do we have consensus to move this forward to our July meeting to adopt those academic standards?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And item I is the financial update.
The board was given the financial information for May. Again, just to recap, we're on a two-month lag based off of timing from the bank. So beginning checking account balance in May was approximately 3.5 million. We took in total receipts of about 430,000. Total expenditures for the month with the two payrolls and vouchers that were paid was about 1.2 million, leaving the ending balance at 2.7, approximately 2.7 million for the month. A little update on your end, we have closed the 1920 fiscal year as of June 30th. There is nothing that has happened financially in the month of June that has, going to make me change my stance on where we're going to be fund balance-wise. We're still sorting through stuff, still going through invoices and, and revenues and whatnot. But again, there's nothing that's happened in the last month that's going to make me change my stance on where we're going to end up, which is approximately a little over 100,000, I think, deficit for the year.
Okay. Do we move that to, do we move that to, no? Nope, nope. Okay. All right. And item J is the approval of vouchers. Have every, everyone been able to get, go through those? Is there any questions?
I had one question.
Okay.
It's a, for $11,419 to Hilliard Minneapolis. It's just a bunch of numbers, so I was just wondering.
So it's usually when there's a, a large group of numbers, those are individual invoices. And so then it'll pay, you know, with one vendor, there'll be multiple invoices with a total dollar amount of those invoices added together. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, what kind of vendor is, I mean?
Oh, what kind of vendor is Hilliard? They provide all of our, I shouldn't say all, they provide quite a bit of our cleaning services. So when we buy cleaning machines or, so what you're seeing there is a lot of pre-buying for PPE and cleaning equipment that's going to be required for next year.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a consensus to roll this into the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. If there's not anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.